Okay, we have a quorum present and so we can proceed with the meeting. Please join me in prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to ask Bishop Robert Knight to come and lead us in prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you right now for this gathering, Lord God. We thank you for everyone that's represented in this room, Lord God, in every position of authority, Lord God, that you have them in, Lord God. And we ask right now, God, that you would bless, Lord God, God, that you would give us clarity, Lord God, understanding, Lord God, as we come together in unity, Lord God. Hallelujah concerning the city, concerning the county of this Baldwin County, Lord God. We just thank you right now, Lord God, for strategies, for insight, for wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, Lord God. And we thank you right now, Lord God, for being God. We ask that you continue to protect us, Lord God, cover us, and we ask that you would bless us even in this meeting, in Jesus' mighty precious name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bishop, for that prayer. We don't have any awards or presentations on the agenda tonight, so we can move to adoption of the minutes. You have all received a copy of the December 14, 2021 council meeting minutes and the December 30, 2021 call council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections that need to be made to these minutes? Do I hear a motion to adopt the December 14 and December 30, 2021 council meeting minutes?
No.
Second.
Second, second.
Okay, it's been motioned second. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
The minutes are adopted as official. Okay, we have two different public hearings to consider tonight. The procedure for the hearings will be as follows. Once it has been determined that this public hearing has been properly posted and advertised, the clerk will read the proposed amendment to the land development code. We would then hear a report from the planning and zoning administrator, including the advisory decision of the planning and zoning commission. Council will first hear from the applicant and anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment. We would then hear from anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the amendment. If anyone speaks in opposition to the amendment, we would then give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal, but the rebuttal must be limited to the points or issues that are raised by the opposition. We would then give the opposition the opportunity to speak in rebuttal. They too must limit comments to the points or issues raised. Please make sure that before you speak, that you give your name, your address for the record. The first public hearing is to consider three ordinances, annexing and rezoning property associated with a specific project on North Columbia Street. Because these first three ordinances are a combined request on contiguous property and the passage of one is tied to the passage of them all, we are able to hold one public hearing for the three ordinances. Ordinance 02111-17 amends the charter of the city of Millisville to annex approximately 7.99 acres at 2781 North Columbia Street to set the zoning as community commercial and finally to place it in voting District 6. Ordinance 0-2111-18 amends the land development code to rezone property located at 111 Log Cabin Road from SFR 2 to community commercial. And ordinance 0-2111-19 amends the land development code to rezone property located at 118 Turkey Run from SFR 2 to community commercial. Mr. Clerk, has this public hearing been properly posted and advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
I will ask the clerk to please read the three ordinances by caption.
Ordinance 02111-17, this is to conduct a public hearing of an order permitting the charter to accept approximately 7.99 acres of land into the corporate limits of the city of Millisville with the zoning of CC, community commercial. The property is located at 2781 North Columbia Street, Baldwin County tax map 085 parcel 050, and presently owned by Log Cabin Road 441 Investors LLC. This property will be placed in City District 6 and City County Voting Precinct 6. Ordinance 02111-18, an ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002, known as the land development code of the city of Millisville, Georgia, ordinance rezones property located at 111 Log Cabin Road from SFR 2 to CC. Ordinance 0-2111-19, an ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002, known as the land development code of the city of Millisville, Georgia, ordinance rezones property located at 118 Turkey Run from SFR 2 to CC. Those are the three.
Okay, thank you. I'll recognize the zoning administrator for a report, please. All three of these properties were unanimously voted yes for the changes. At this time, I remind anyone who wishes to speak to come to the podium and state your name and your address for the records. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this amendment?
Tom Reyes, 58, 58 Central Avenue, St. Petersburg, Florida, 33707. Happy New Year, good evening, Mayor, council members, Reverend, city staff. My name is Tom Reyes. We're the applicant, the developer for the proposed project, so we're happy to be here and thank you for your time. I'm here to answer any questions that the council has, staff has, or the public. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in favor of the amendment? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to the amendment?
I'd like to thank the council and the mayor. Thank God we have freedom to pray and pledge our flag. My name is Scott Salter. I live on 116 Quail Place. This is my first ever time in the chamber here to address a situation, crisis problem, and I am opposed to it. My property, I am opposed to it, and I have two elderly neighbors that live, that their property is adjacent to the property, the 7.8 acres. They couldn't be here tonight, but I am, I did speak with them today, and I am speaking on their behalf as well as mine, okay? So my concern is, I can't stop the, you know, this is a, we're a capitalistic society and I can't stop growth. And, but, this property is so close to my neighborhood and my neighbors, and it's going to affect a lot of people here, and I'm afraid it's going to affect us in not a good way. We're going to have, it's going to completely change our environment, it's going to change wildlife that we have around there, it's going to change noise levels that we enjoy in our peace and tranquil nights. We're going to, the noise level is going to increase with 18 wheelers bringing in, bringing in food, supplies, and whatever it takes to maintain and run a grocery store at that size, okay? We're going to have lights up. We're not going to enjoy a quiet night. I don't think, certain people are not going to enjoy a quiet night's sleep anymore because of activity that's going to be going on in this, in this new proposal, okay? My concerns are heartfelt, and like I said, I speak for other people that couldn't be here tonight, and it's basically a wetland down there, you know? I've been living there for over 25 years. We have a wonderful neighborhood. It's, location's great, we have a multicultural neighborhood, Caucasian, African-American, Hispanic-Americans, Asian-Americans. I know most everybody there, and we all get along, we live in harmony, and we want to, we want to maintain that. And I'm afraid this, 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 you know, this property going commercial and having this extremely large complex coming in is going to change some things, and it's not going to change it for the, for the good of our neighborhood, of our dwellings, and that's, that's my concern, and that's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salter. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the amendment? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Deborah Freeman-Pahl. I think my property is going to be adjacent to it because I'm at 126 Quail Place. I'm kind of confused at what's going to be back there because I've heard it's going to be a grocery store, which is public. Heard also it's going to be a strip, little strip mall, but I don't know how far it's going to be connected to my property. I don't know if there will be a buffer to help with the noise level. I don't know if the crime rate will come even more heavier with it being back there. And I know crime is everywhere, but I am concerned, and I just want to know whether there'd be a buffer. If so, what type of buffer are you going to put back there? And if so, how far is it coming to my property? And then I know my taxes are going to increase because we've got property and residential that together. How will that affect, because, I mean, it's hard on me now anyway, but I know everybody. Those are my concerns about it. If I had a little bit more to fill in. Now, my neighbors, they are Mexicans. I've been there since 92. I also own the property across the street, which is 121 Quail Place. Now, my little Mexican neighbors, they have been there since they were about maybe five. They have, the parents moved to Dublin, but the kids would stay in there. They got the letter, but they don't understand what you guys are doing. They don't understand anything. They just said they got the letter, but they don't understand. I asked them, could they come to the meeting? I missed the first meeting, but they said they couldn't come to just let them know what you guys are trying to do. And that's all we want, some clarity, because as Mrs. Salter said, it's a great neighborhood, but a lot of the people are leaving because they heard that you guys was coming in. So we've had one, two, three to leave already. So that's my concern, too. Will it, what will it do to us? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Okay, is there any rebuttal, Mr. Perez?
Thank you. All valid input, good comments. At the Semler Company, we just develop shopping centers. We've been doing it for over 60 years, neighborhood scale shopping centers. So the issues that you guys have brought up are very common and typical, and we always design our projects to deal with those issues up front. The, breaking down the first comment on eradicating or removing all the wetlands, we are not doing that. We've designed our site to work around the existing environmental wetlands because it's the right thing to do, and we're lucky that we could fit our site plan within the existing wetlands. I think the only wetlands that we're mitigating is for the access drive to access the property on Log Cabin Road, and that already has occurred with the building permitting of the car wash on the hard corner. So that, that type of wetland mitigation has already occurred and have been approved by all the agencies. So we actually are going to have a shared entrance with the car wash so we can have less traffic impacts on the road. So we thought that that was the right thing to do, too, also with the planning of the project. So we, it's important for wildlife habitat to remain, and the key to that is preserving the wetlands, so they kind of go hand in hand. So we put a lot of thought into our planning for the project on that. With regards to buffers, the city's buffer requirement, I believe, is 15 feet from a residential neighborhood to a commercial. We're going to be doing in excess of 15 feet. In some areas, we'll be 25 to 30 feet, and in some areas, we'll be about close to 70 feet. And I believe that is possibly your house, ma'am. We planned on that because we saw how close we were getting to your house, and we said those are the right thing to do. So we set out to do that up front. City staff also encouraged us to do that, too, up front, which I think is great. You have great city staff that represents the city very well in doing the right thing for development. So our goal is to keep that as a natural buffer because it is beautiful. And areas where maybe there is plantings that, in dead spots, if you will, we are looking to supplement the planting so we can enhance the buffer. We've done that many times in many projects throughout Florida, Georgia, Alabama, and North Carolina successfully. So it looks, at the end, after everything's grown in and planted, it looks like a beautiful green oasis wall. So we're, that's what we're planning there. And in terms of noise control, usually the wider the buffer, the bigger the buffer, the more dense the buffer actually is the best deterrent for noise control. That's been our experience. Lighting, too, lighting will be screened. Our goal is to really just, really be truncated from the residential neighborhood, so we're, we're like we're not there. That's our goal in design. So I hope that addresses some of the concerns. Let me know if I missed a few, and I can answer them as best as I can. So I do have a draft plan I could show you guys to look at, too, so you can get an idea in terms of scale and things to help further your concerns. Our proposed development is only going to be a portion of the total land, the Semler Development. So there's some land in the back that's going to be not part of the Semler project. So plans for that are probably going to be done by a future developer in the future, will not be the Semler Company. Whoever comes in to do that, that Phase 2 of the project will come in with plans at that time, so. Oh, yeah, they'll, they'll be integrated with the plans, but it'll be at a, at a later date.
I have a comment, yes.
Sure.
As far as the entrance to the public, I know, I understand it's going to be on Log Cabin.
Correct.
Is there going to be a rear entrance?
No. The only entrances that we're proposing is one at Log Cabin, and basically what that is, is, you know where the existing entrance is to the car wash on Log Cabin? We're going to reconfigure that so it's a shared access for the car wash, the existing car wash, and the future shopping center. So it's one combined entrance. So there will be no other access points for the shopping center from that point on Log Cabin. The other entrance will be on 441, and that'll be a full access entrance. That's where most of the traffic's coming from, is 441, as you guys probably know. Probably where the midpoint of the property frontage is, is where the entrance, new entrances are being proposed. So it's going to be, I'd say approximately 750 feet from the existing traffic signal at Log Cabin Road and 441. So it's, I think, further north than where your existing entrance is, much further north. There'll be two separate, completely separate entrances. So we will not be seeking access into your neighborhood. We will not. Yeah, we don't, we, first of all, one, so you guys have all the reasons, the technical reasons, number one, usually it's difficult to do that because you have, you're trying to mix two different types of traffic. It's hard to control that and do that right. But on this particular site, also, there's about a 25 to 30 foot difference in the height of your neighborhood and the height of the site. So to try to, try to do that is extremely difficult, just from a topographical point of view.
Also, in reference to the buffer wall, that, or what I like to say is separating the commercial from our residential neighborhood. Now, what I would like to see, personally, is a wall about the top, the size of that wall right here. Okay? They can do it, called concrete.
Yeah, and...
And it's taking out the noise, that's going, that's going to protect us from crime. It's going to protect us from, from a lot of elements, okay? And then, to be more specific, about the green tree, leaves and citrus trees, they grow, they grow real good down here in Baldwin County. Leaves and citrus trees on both sides of that wall, that's going to, that, those leaves and citrus trees and that concrete wall, I feel like will take care of the noise level.
Yeah, some of the downsides...
That's me, that's what I, that's what I would like, that's what my neighbors would like. I discussed it with them, and that's just, I'm just, I'm just letting you know, that's what we, that's what we would like to see.
Understood. The, our experiences on, on doing walls in, in projects that we have done in the southeast, that's usually the initial request of homeowners, and when you get a concrete wall that tall, first of all, number one, it's not attractive. Number two, it shadows out a lot of natural light that comes into your backyard, your side yards, so it creates this huge shadowing, which is really not a desirable feature. These are some of the things, the feedback that we've gotten after we've done this. So, and a lot of times, there's been a hard time for folks selling their house on a resale because the community then is perceived as, you know, like a fortress. What is, what's wrong with this neighborhood? Why is it, why does it have a fortress around it? So this is some of the feedback that we've gotten from different projects in different parts of the southeast and all that. The feedback that we've gotten from most people, if they had to do it all over again and do it right, if it was a clean slate, they prefer a natural buffer, taking the existing natural features that are already there, and if there's some dead trees and stuff going in and cleaning some of that out, the underbrush and removing some of the dead trees, and replanting with trees that you have just suggested, infill, and infill that, and make it a more densified buffer where it becomes pretty much non-transparent, and it's a beautiful green wall to look at. Most folks want to look at that every morning when they wake up in the morning rather than looking at a big concrete wall, like a DOT wall that we see all over, you know, the fine state, up and down all the interstate. So that's just from the school of experience, hearing from different neighbors, different residents, different HOAs over the years. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question for the council.
Mr. Salter, just, just a moment, okay? So, no, I was saying, just a moment, so if you want to, if you want to speak now, please come to the podium and speak.
I appreciate the cooperation with the gentleman about answering questions and our concerns, but my other concern is this, what is it going to do to our taxes? We're a low to low-middle income neighborhood, and it's affordable. There's affordable housing, affordable living. We have Georgia Power Utilities, and it suits, more than suits our, our needs, okay? And with this coming in, how's it going to affect our taxes, our property taxes?
Sir, if I might, the only way your taxes would go up is if your value of property increases.
Okay. Is this going to increase our property value?
If, if it did, then, I don't know, I guess, let me try to figure out exactly how I want to say this, but that is something that most homeowners might look for, especially at a time, at some point in time, that they think they may sell. I don't know, and in, in all the years that I have seen this, whether or not your property value is going to be affected, one way or the other. And if it's not affected, the only way that you would pay any increased taxes is if we increase the tax base, and that would be for all property within the city.
Okay, okay. I understand, I might, you know...
If, if that makes sense.
It does, it does, I understand. I understand. Well, I appreciate, I appreciate y'all hearing my, my concerns.
Yes.
And, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
I have, just have one. Do you by chance have a picture of, of a mountain? I have a drawing here, but do you have a picture of what you...
Yes. So the, this is how, all the requests for the rezoning is, is shown on the sheet. This is what we're, some of the projects we're proposing, and if you can see here, the buffering is in excessive city codes quite a bit, actually, so the preservation of the... Yeah, no, definitely, that's what I...
Y'all want to see it?
Yeah, if you can pass that around, I'm sure, the, the first phase of development is going to be where?
It's shown on that diagram. That'll front 441 and go back approximately about 900 feet, 950. And then the second phase will be behind that as a later...
Okay, on the property that is listed as 111?
Correct.
Okay.
And did you by chance share that with the...
Yeah, I was going to...
Okay, that, that would have pulled a lot of the options that they had, yes.
Are there any other comments from council? Any other questions for Mr. Perez?
Just one comment I wanted to clarify with regards to the, the city taxes going up. I'm, I'm not a tax expert. We probably have one back here. But one thing that I have experienced with cities and counties in situations similar to this is with the annexation of some of the, some of this property going into the city coffers, that should help increase the city's taxes, the collection of city taxes, so it's kind of newfound income, if you will, to help the city collect new revenue source that they didn't have prior to this possible rezoning. Second, changing the use from residential R2, RS2 to the CC commercial, typically it's a higher millage tax rate for commercials substantially higher than residential. it's a higher millage tax rate for commercial substantially higher than residential. So that also will add some newfound income to the city. So hopefully, in the totality of city-collected tax revenue, that, that should be an increase. And usually increases help offset other increases in other places of the city, usually what happens, but that's obviously up to the council to decide that. But I just wanted to share that experience with you.
Okay, thank you. This concludes the presentation of evidence in this public hearing. We will now vote on each ordinance individually. I will ask the clerk to please read ordinance 0-2111-17 by caption.
This is to conduct a public hearing of an ordinance amending the charter to accept approximately 7.99 acres of land into the corporate limits of the city of Millisville with a zoning of CC Community Commercial. The property is located at 2781 North Columbia Street, Ballin County Tax Map 085 Parcel 050, and presently owned by Log Cabin Road 441 Investors LLC. The property will be placed in the City Council District 6 and City County Voting Precinct 6.
You have heard the ordinance. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve the findings of the P&amp;Z Board contingent upon the buffers being discussed in the public hearing being included.
I would second that with the amendment.
Okay, it's been properly motioned. Second, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. I'll ask the clerk to read ordinance 0-2111-18 by caption.
Ordinance 0-2111-18, an ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002, known as the Land Development Code of the City of Millisville, Georgia. The ordinance rezones property located at 111 Log Cabin Road from SFR2 to CC.
I apologize, I got to get that O in my hand. You've heard the ordinance. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve the findings of the P&amp;Z Board contingent upon the buffers being discussed in the public hearing being included.
I would second that motion, but I would also add in that the discussion of preservation of existing wetlands and that that also be included, it's going to be in the minutes, but it'd also be included in the motion.
We discussed buffer, a minimum requirement of 15, 15 foot. Some places you're talking about 70 foot. Are we going to require him to do 70 foot?
If that is, if, if that is what is discussed here during this public meeting, that is what I would ask to be reflected from the minutes, to be reflected in the permit.
We going over and beyond our, our requirement?
Is, since the developer is willing to do so, yes, sir.
Let's, wait a minute, let's...
Yes, we're willing to do that, but if you make a motion to make it like 70 feet across the board, that's not going to work for us. I mean, it's the way the land configures, the topography of the existing land, you know, it's, really should be, I guess, maybe up to staff discretion too, to review it, or, you know, we're willing to exceed the city code to do the right thing and do it right, but it's just, as, as the councilman said, it's true. It's got to be, it's going to be different dimensions for different areas of, of the site plan, buffering the existing residential, so...
I think that's why he stated that.
The way that we are wording this is that you have expressed to this body of what you intend to do. And that is to exceed in some places and maybe to not exceed in others.
Correct.
But to, but to create a buffer that is at least at a minimum within what the city requires.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And exceeding in some places where that is on your own.
Correct. Exceeding in most places, absolutely, yeah.
So what, what we are asking is that you keep your word.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I just want the wording, because if you just say 70 feet across the board, obviously, that's...
Right, that's what I'm saying.
That's why, that's why we didn't use it in...
Oh, okay, good.
But he, but he said in, in presentation, some places 70 feet, that's why, that's why I want to clarify.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, correct. Councilman Mullins nailed it. The other thing too is on all wetlands, when you said all wetlands, we are going to be required to mitigate about less than a half acre of wetlands in order to get that access worked out. So to say all wetlands would, wouldn't be honest, I guess, or accurate. So just wanted to point those two distinctions out.
Before you, before, we're going to redo the motion, but before you do it, the zoning administrator needs to have a word to say back there, this is dying.
I'm sorry. I think what I'm hearing here is correct.
Come on up to the mic, Murrah. Okay. Is that we want a minimum buffer of 25 feet, irregardless of our standards. Nowhere on this property will your buffer be a minimum less than 25 feet. Is that correct?
Did that work?
And did I hear that correct?
I missed your question.
Yeah, okay. So that's going to be your minimum.
Yeah, 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 say it again.
Okay, so by understanding from what I've heard from tonight, with this development, the minimum buffer anywhere around this development will be 25 feet. That is the minimum. Okay. And your buffer, all your buffers will be natural, correct?
Yes.
And if there is any bare spots, the, do what now?
Supplement.
Yeah, it will be supplemented with planting, okay? And can we say, will this planting bear reflection sort of what's already there? It's going to be like more trees there and not just the small bushes?
Correct.
Okay.
That's a, that's a real buffer.
Yes, that's a real buffer. We're going to go back with trees and we're not going to go back with low-growing shrubs in any part. All right, did I miss anything?
Now, what, now what is our standard? Our standard is 15?
It's 15, correct.
Okay, now, and our standard is vegetation that will be at least six feet in three years, right?
Right.
So what are we telling him? You got to plant mature trees or plant that, something that's going to grow to at least six feet in, in three years?
Well, I would give them the chance to let it grow. I mean, um, yeah, kind of do like the minimum planting that we have now with letting it grow, if that's what you choose. In other words, we're going to stick to our, our policy as, as close as possible, with the exception of the fact that we're going to ask him to do at the minimum of 25 feet, and then not just low-growing vegetation. It's going to be, have to get something that will come in there that will be of substantial size in three years, right? Yes, ma'am, but that's what I'm kind of hearing from everybody. Is that what I'm understanding too? Just, you know, make sure the buffer won't be a minimum of 30. Uh-huh.
25.
I mean, 25, I'm sorry, 25. We got 20.
You said 30 at some place.
I hear 30. Minimum 20.
Yeah, but we're, we're going to leave that to their discretion if there is more, but a minimum of 25. Is that okay with you all?
Yes.
Okay. Is that okay, Mr. Mullins?
It's okay, fine.
Okay, so we're going to ask Walter to redo that motion.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve the findings of the P&amp;Z Board contingent upon a 25-foot minimum buffer.
Natural.
Natural buffer.
And I would second that with the addition of the wetlands that are being discussed, that part that, that be included, and if there is to be any change in the plans that there are, that you certainly notify the city immediately.
Just so I understand what's the wetland conditions, if you understand it?
Clarification is that you're, you've already said that you have to mitigate some of them?
Correct.
But the remaining wetlands would, would stay?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, no, that's...
Is that, is that clear? Yeah, okay. All right.
We, we, if I may, we just want to make sure that everything is included that is being talked about.
Correct.
And that we don't have to come back at a later date and try to clarify.
Yes, understood.
Thank you.
Okay. So it has been properly motioned. And second, I'll ask the clerk to please call, call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay. I'll ask the clerk to please read ordinance 0-2111-19 by caption.
Ordinance 0-2111-19, and, and ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002, known as the Land Development Code of the City of Millisville, Georgia. Ordinance rezones property located at 118 Turkey Run from SFR2 to CC.
You have heard this ordinance. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve the findings of the P&amp;Z Board with the addition of a 25-foot minimum natural vegetative buffer.
Second.
It's been properly motioned. And second, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay. That concludes that public hearing. Thank you all for your input.
Thank you.
The second public hearing is to consider ordinance 0-2111-20 that amends the Land Development Code to rezone property located at 131 North Jefferson Street from CBC to Mr. Clerk, has this public hearing been properly posted and advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
I'll ask the clerk to please read the ordinance by caption.
An ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002, known as the Land Development Code of the City of Millisville, Georgia. Ordinance rezones property located at 131 North Jefferson Street from CBC to MR2.
I'll recognize the zoning administrator for a report. This is the property located next to the Golden Corral. It's been used as offices and I think several different uses before.
Golden pantry.
Golden pantry. I know, Golden Corral, Golden Pantry. All right, Golden Pantry.
Showing you history, Murrah.
I know. That's right. Yeah, um, now, it's, they're, the developer is wanting to rezon this to MR2 in order to convert the previous uses of this into apartments. And it does have all the parks, it's got like 28 parking places in the rear of the building. And it was unanimously passed. Okay. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this amendment?
Counsel, my name is Frank Pendergast. I live at 136 North Woods Drive in Millisville, Georgia. And I'm proposing, you know, purchased this property from the Gumby Estate, built in 1965. It's seen better days, hasn't had water turned on the last six years, plenty of water coming in from the ceiling. And we're looking to go in there and put in market-rate apartments. As you stated, there's 30, there's about 30 parking spaces behind the building. We're looking to put in approximately 16 bedrooms, broke up in between studios and two-bedroom apartments. And it's located behind the Golden Pantry. Thanks for the spicy chicken biscuits at 2:00 in the morning, for those who are up that late like we are. And the other property next to it is known as the Blue House. It's a multi, it's a older house that's been converted into multiple unit, apartment units. And I'm here to answer any questions anybody might have.
Okay. Thank you.
Access from Jefferson as well as from behind, or?
No, sir, there, there's two entrances on either side of the building. So there's two, there's two, there's, on either side of the building, there's access to Jefferson Street. There's nothing in the rear.
Oh, there's nothing in the rear?
No, the parking, just the parking's back there. There are no, there's no, you know, it backs up to the back of Duckworth.
Uh-huh.
And then on the side is the, is that the city lot that's on Hancock Street, where the pavilion is.
Right.
Yeah, but there's no rear entrance into the property.
Okay.
One way in, one way out?
No, well, I mean, yeah, I mean, there can be one way in, yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Can't go too...
Not necessarily the same way.
No, but you actually can't come up Jefferson Street on that side, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, correct, correct, yeah.
I was speaking of the building, not the parking. There, there is access from the parking.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yes. There, the, the way we're configuring it, we're probably going to put a central hallway from, from Jefferson Street.
Right.
And then on the rear, there's two, there's two stairwells on the, on the back that go up to the, you know, it's a, it's a two-story building. From, from Jefferson Street, it looks like a single.
Right.
When you go down below, there's a, there's a second story down below. And there's two stairwells on the back of the building that have access to the top as well.
Okay.
Okay.
There are some, there are some, I think there's some drawings, some sketches in there.
That's, that's, but that's what I was talking about, access to the building.
Oh, yes, sir.
Not, not to the parking lot.
Yes.
I know there's only one way in and one way out.
Yeah.
I was trying to follow you on that.
Sorry.
I was trying to think of the building. Um, the, I guess we can ask questions at this point.
Yeah, not yet, not yet.
Not yet?
Yeah, not yet.
I'll ask a question in a minute then.
Thank you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to the amendment? Well, does counsel have any questions at this time?
Frank, I just wanted to get some idea of how you're going to lay this out, that's within, within the structure.
Sure. There, there's going to be a, from, from Jefferson Street, there's going to be a central hallway, and that will access with a stairwell going downstairs. So the lower level has two ways of, you know, we're going to have to meet, obviously, local fire code. So there'll be an entrance in the, in the center of the building that will, you know, be a central hallway, so the bedrooms, the apartments will be entered in through that central hallway. There won't be a door facing Jefferson Street.
Okay.
There'll be windows, but there won't be a door.
Right. So all access will be enclosed?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And then, and on the, and on the rear as well.
Right.
But, but yes, from Jefferson Street, you'll just see windows.
Okay.
And then a central hallway.
That makes sense.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Any other questions by counsel? This concludes the presentation of evidence in this public hearing. Is there a motion?
I would make a motion that we accept the findings of the P&amp;Z Board and approve the request, please.
Second.
It's been properly motioned. And second, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, that concludes the, the old business on the agenda for the evening. We will move to new business and ask the clerk to please read ordinance 0, I mean, O-2201-01 by caption as a first reading.
This is ordinance to amend the City of Millisville Code of Ordinances, Section 74-43, entitled Charges for Garbage Disposal, to correspond with solid waste disposal fees as set forth in the one-year contract extension with Waste Management, Formerly Advanced Disposals Services Middle Georgia LLC.
You've heard the resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
That's the ordinance.
I mean, ordinance.
First reading.
First reading.
All right, that's the first reading. I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead of myself. That's the first reading on this ordinance. We'll consider its adoption at the next regular council meeting. Now I'll ask the clerk to read Resolution R-2201-01.
Now, I'll ask the clerk to read Resolution R. 2201-01 by caption.
Resolution R. 220101, a resolution to cancel the January 25, 2022 council meeting and work session due to the Georgia Municipal Association Cities United Summit.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, that will settle.
Second.
Question.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah. This is gonna give us time to approve the ordinance. Are we gonna skip the next meeting for this contract?
I would, the, the contract became effective January 1, and I certainly hesitate to recommend anything to counsel, but it would, it would be helpful if we could waive the requirements and pass 0-220101 on one read. That would enable us to be able to, to utilize those new charges sooner. It would, really would not be an issue if we weren't counseling the second meeting in January, but we're gonna miss four weeks if we, if we can't pass the ordinance on the first read, but that's totally up to y'all, so.
I think first we need to take care of the resolution.
Right, that's what I was about to say. How about we go back and finish up the resolution before we go back to the ordinance?
That's right.
Agreed.
Yeah, and then when we finish that, I have a question before we do that. So we've had a motion and second on the resolution. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Hmm, aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
My hesitation on the resolution was I'm thinking that we're all gonna be back by then.
That should be the case.
Right. So I'm confused. That's dangerous.
We always could put it back if we needed.
Well, that, at least in my time as city council, that, that has been the same schedule, and there's only been one, one Cities United Summit since I've been city manager, because it was council last year because COVID. And since the schedule for Cities United has been what it has been, that is over with once the legislative breakfast is held on Monday. When it was Old Mayor's Day, I don't think it was.
They had classes on Tuesdays, but now they don't have classes on Tuesdays.
This, this counseling of the meeting has kinda followed the Old Mayor's Day schedule as opposed to the Cities United schedule as it, as it has been.
So I'm, I'm thinking, I mean, I should've said that before we did that, but, okay, I'm like Mr. Mullins, we can always put it back, but I, I don't see the need to counsel it, because I think that we're all gonna be in town, back in town, I think.
We can come back. We can come back, too.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna go back and back. So let's go back to.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I would, I would ask that we proceed with the next resolution, and then we can, I'll be happy to make a motion to reconsider Resolution R. 2201.
Well, we wanna start with the ordinance first.
I'm sorry, ordinance, that's what Bo was telling us, 0-2201-01.
Okay, so did we call the roll? We did call the roll on that one. Okay, so I'll ask the clerk to read.
The resolution, yeah.
Yes, uh huh, I'll ask the clerk to read Resolution R. 2201-02 by caption.
Got some direction. A resolution to authorize a construction contract with Skyline Construction Services Incorporated for roof repairs on Millersville Fire Rescue Station 1 located at 201 West Thomas.
Okay, you've heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
It's been properly motioned and second. Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
I'll ask the clerk to read Resolution R. 2201-03 by caption at this time.
A resolution to authorize a construction contract with Dyer Construction Incorporated for tile replacement at Millersville Fire Station, Fire Rescue Station 1 located at 201 West Thomas Street.
You've heard this resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, so now we're going to go back to ordinance.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion that this body reconsider ordinance 0-2201-01.
We never do that, huh?
We don't need to reconsider it if we're gonna waive the.
Well, reconsider it so that we may waive the first reading.
A motion to waive, to amend, well, we need to.
A motion to recon, a motion to reconsider the ordinance so that we may.
Need a motion to amend.
Motion to amend the agenda, to reconsider the ordinance.
Well, I, I don't think that we necessarily need to amend the agenda. It's already on the agenda, so we would be able to just reconsider it because it's on the agenda.
We're waiving the second reading.
Right.
A motion, a motion to reconsider, yes, a motion to, a motion to reconsider ordinance 0-2201-01 to suspend the rules and pass on a first read.
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's the motion.
That's second.
Okay.
That was Mr. Mullins.
Mr. Mullins, okay. It's been properly motioned and second. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, now, now we vote on the ordinance, the adoption of the ordinance number 0-2201-01. We've heard it read by caption. Okay, do I hear a motion?
Yep, I would make a motion that we approve ordinance 0-2201-01.
And, and suspend the rules to, to do so on the first read.
We've already voted on that, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, now we're just.
Cedric, you good?
I'm good.
Okay, if he's good, I'm good.
And second, Mr. Mullins. So I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, now, resolution dash R.
Motion to adjourn.
Now, well, according to Mr. Reynolds, this concludes, this concludes tonight's agenda. Are there any questions or comments from counsel?
Do we rescind, y'all adopted the cancellation. You still wanna cancel or do you wanna rescind that resolution?
We will, we will. Mr. Mullins said we'll deal with that.
We'll, we'll contact you later.
You'll, you'll contact us later.
All right, we didn't eat 24 hours.
Yeah. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Get out of here while we can.
Terrible.